Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call our meeting to order. This is Scott Kahn. And item one is our roll call and all of our commissioners are either present or will be present very shortly. We expect George Yamisaki to be on shortly and we also expect Reed Assemble to be on shortly, but we have a quorum, so we're going to start. So all commissioners are spoken for, and I'd like to have item two as a vote on the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. So moved. Moving on to item three, an adoption of our April 22 regular meeting minutes that have been sent out. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Second. Second. Favor. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now, moving on to item four, our executive directors report Trent Rohr.
Good morning, Commissioners, President Kahn.
Good morning, Mr. Rohr.
Commissioner McCray. A lot going on the last four weeks, so settle in. I have a lot to report out. At the federal level, just an update on the American Rescue Plan. This was the stimulus act that Biden introduced, the president introduced in the Congress passed. Two items just of note for households that we serve at HSA, the federal child tax credit of $3,600 per per child under five will begin, the payments will begin on July 1st. And it'll be a monthly payment for the first six months, and that's on top of the $1,400 federal stimulus payments that those households already get. So as I reported last month, the month before, this is a very large influx of cash support, financial assistance to households who need it, about 65 million low and medium income children will benefit from this lifting literally millions of households out of poverty for 2021. And then the allocation, the government side, the allocation of the first round of state and local recovery act funds will be released this week, and these are the funds that go directly, come directly to cities, counties in the state. Counties overall will receive 8.1 billion. San Francisco's allocation is about $650 million, which essentially closed the city budget deficit. So the the funding from the feds did what was intended to do, which was close local government deficits so that vital services didn't have to be cut. Um, moving on to the state, the governor's may revise was released two weeks ago, I believe. Might have been last week. I think it was two weeks ago. It was two weeks ago, Friday. The state has experienced a huge revenue windfall. The governor's may revise assumed tax revenue coming in at $14.3 billion more than the forecast in the January budget. And then the Biden American Rescue Plan, the funding directly to the states totals 26 billion for California. So that's essentially a $40 billion surplus. And so the governor recognizing the the need that's out there in our communities across all populations is not saving this money for a rainy day. He is proposing to spend it in significant ways. And let me walk you through the areas both of direct impact to HSA administered programs and then also generally to our our low income and at risk individuals and families. So the biggest and biggest investment that through a single issue that's receiving the most money, the highest investment is homelessness. And funding for homelessness is in a lot of different areas, but there are four specific programs that will be funded that we administer. The first is the CalRex Housing Support Program. This is the rental subsidy program that supports homeless families who are on public assistance. The state increase is almost fivefold from the current allocation. It's $475 million. So we could anticipate our allocation increasing by five or six times, which would bring it to something like $25 million. The Bringing Families Home Program, this is a rental subsidy housing support program for families who are engaged in the child welfare system. Ostensibly, it's to provide rental subsidies for families whose last sort of barrier to reunifying with their children is housing instability. We are one of, I believe, 20 counties in the pilot or initial round of bringing families home. This $280 million investment will not only increase our allocation, but also allow many more counties in California to to begin programs. And then a $175 million investment, and this is up from 25 million. So that's for seven times, seven X increase for our housing disability assistance program. And this is a rental subsidy program for individuals who are disabled and applying for federal disability benefits through SSI. These individuals are typically on our county assistance program, getting them on SSI will generally double their their monthly income and allow for more stable housing placement. This funding supports both rental subsidies, but also some case management support for these clients. So those are, those are all significant increases for us. And will likely go to the Board of Supervisors once we get our allocations for a budget supplemental in order to draw down those monies in July or August. In addition, there's funding to support the alternative housing program that HSA has has overseen under COVID. These are the hotel rooms that we leased across the city, over 2,500 hotel rooms, $150 million to support the operations of those hotel rooms and also to support transition out of those hotel rooms into permanent house, which I'll mention a little later in my report. In addition, 2.75 billion statewide in one-time funds for Project Home Key, which is the opportunity for cities and counties to actually purchase the hotels that we had leased under COVID. That effort is being managed out of the city's Department of Home Assistance and Support of Housing in coordination and partnership with us. And we are assessing literally dozens of hotels to see if they're suitable for purchase with these funds. I'll note that the city has already purchased two with plans for a third, and it looks like we might have funding now, or just perhaps five or six of these, which will be permanently owned by the city. I'm moving on our specific HSA administered programs. Medi-Cal is proposed, the governor proposed expanding Medi-Cal coverage to undocumented individuals aged 60 and older, currently aged 65 and older undocumented residents are eligible. This is a cost to, this would also include IHSS as well in supportive services because those two programs are linked. This would cost a billion dollars next year if it goes to the legislature, which I anticipate it will. In CalWorks, the others proposing a 5, 5.3% increase to the CalWorks grant. Again, sort of increased recognizing that the CalWorks grants have not matched inflations rate of inflation for decades, trying to bring these families up to a safety net that actually can support themselves and their kids. In San Francisco, as you likely know, the local ordinance for our county assistance program specifies that when we see a CalWorks grant increase, the cap in grant increases commensurate. So we'll see a 5% increase, 5.3% increase to our cap grant as well. And then a budget initiative that CWDA, the County Welfare Directors Association, in conjunction with San Francisco was supporting, which was funding for six months of cash aid for parents who are on CalWorks, but whose children were placed into foster care while they're on CalWorks. What this will allow is those parents to continue to receive CalWorks cash assistance and support while their children are in foster care, which has really shown and proven that it helps those parents reunify with their children when we continue to provide cash and other supports to them. Our Family and Children Services Division Child Welfare will also receive a significant influx of of funding should this budget go through the legislature, $122 million statewide to support one-time implementation of the family's first Family First Prevention Services Act, known as FFPSA. Basically allows us counties to develop child and family well-being prevention plans, so system prevention plans, these funds would support those prevention activities and hopefully get them in what's known as the Federal Clearinghouse to pave the way to get federal dollars to support those programs. We had actually supported an initiative for $70 million, I believe. So this is even more than we had requested. $25 million statewide to support payments to emergency caregivers for up to four months and then up to a year for good cause. And these are for placements made prior to a caregiver's completion of the RFA process. Basically allowing us to place children with relatives or on other placements while they're going through the actual certification process, which recognizes that this process can be long, especially under COVID. It's been, it's been challenging. Almost $40 million to serve youth with complex behavioral health and other needs, sort of what we had preferred as high-end youth or high need youth who generally require really intensive mental health supports. This funding will help offset a lot of the local investments we've been making in this area. And then another $9 million to continue to support our non-minor dependents through the end of 2021, when they otherwise would have aged out, but they'll actually continue to receive cash support as well as as non-minor dependents who turn 21 between July and December. And then just a few other areas with their sort of off-budget for us, but certainly affect our households, emergency rental assistance to cover 100% of back rent owed by California, low-income Californians, and then $2 billion statewide for utility assistance, basically back utility payments for same population. Universal Transitional Kindergarten for four years, for, excuse me, Universal Kindergarten for four-year-olds in the state that will be phased in over four years. And then significant investment in the system of subsidized childcare, funding for 100,000 new slots statewide. So just as an edit, a 32nd editorial, this governor and the administration clearly, unlike any governor that I've had the pleasure to work under as a county executive, really values and recognizes the need to support our low-income families, communities and individuals, our seniors, our kids and child welfare. He understands it coming from a local government, coming from local government, and I couldn't be more pleased with seeing these investments that were made by by him. Locally, just some staffing updates, as you probably, I hopefully saw, and Commissioner Semmel, I thought of you, that Kelly Dearman was appointed as the Director of the Department of Disability and Aging Services, which, as you know, is part of the HSA family. She started on Monday, the 24th. Kelly has a long history with with this agency, serving as Human Services Commissioner for a number of years, being the Executive Director of the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. And then even prior to her work as a commissioner, she was a, in the city attorney's office, working on the child welfare, child welfare dependency team. So really happy Kelly is joining our team and look forward to working alongside her. Our communications team, we've had a lot of transition, staff transition out recently, and we're happy to announce that we have a new team, communications team, staff member. Her name is Maria Mejia Rojas. She'll be taking over our social media manager position, which is this really important position. It's our sort of our link to the outside world through social media, comes to us from Children Now in Oakland, where she ran that nonprofit social media channels. She's also bilingual, which will really help broaden our reach into communities, speaking communities who are in need of our support and services. A few retirements I want to note, I don't know if these individuals are here, but I'll talk nice of them anyway. The first is Mary Adrian. Mary was, is, she hasn't retired yet. She'll be retiring in June, the end of June. She's currently the Program Director over San Francisco Benefits Net, our SFBN, which is our CalFresh and Medi-Cal program. She is retiring after 28 years of service. She started her city career in 1992 and spent the entirety with human services. She was a Medi-Cal Program Manager for five years and Medi-Cal Program Director for four, and then current role as SFNet Director for three years. I've had the pleasure of working alongside Mary in her role as Medi-Cal Director, then also Director of SFBN. I always found her to be just an excellent program director. She's great at team building, supporting her staff of hundreds of hundreds with genuine care, enthusiasm, helping boost their morale, always super responsive at solving really complex Medi-Cal cases when they come to my attention through a phone call, a phone call to Elizabeth or an email asking for help. Medi-Cal is a very complicated program, and it's easy for clients to get sort of lost. And Mary is always quick to to respond, either personally or having one of her program directors, program managers do it. And then I hope Mary leaves sort of with her her legacy in mind, and I know what her legacy is, and it's that she led Medi-Cal during the huge and successful expansion of Medi-Cal under the Affordable Care Act. Her program enrolled over 60,000, 60,000 people into health insurance through the Affordable Care Act, doubling the Medi-Cal caseload. Many of these individuals aged 18 to 64 were receiving health insurance for the first time in their lives and largely due to Mary's leadership. So Mary, I hope you're on. If not, we're recorded. Elizabeth will send you the link. Congratulations and thank you for your almost three decades of service at HSA. Another retirement of our program, Program Director John Sudakawa is retiring from the Family and Children Services Division after 25 years of service at HSA. Also, at the end of June, he started his city career in 1993. He served as a Program Director in many capacities at the agency, both in Family and Children Services, but also as our Contracts Director. And I really want to thank John for taking over the Contracts Director role at a time where it really needed some, I think, steady and thoughtful leadership and really getting that division on the right path towards being efficient and being consistent with with all the city requirements that contracting is guided by. So John, thank you so much for your two and a half decades of service at HSA. And then lastly, and I don't often mention supervisors who retire, but I do want to mention Clive Lazarus, who's retiring after 23 years of service. He's a supervisor in Family and Children Services or Family Support Unit, Family FSU. Clive, I got to know a little bit, just a very genuine, genuinely caring person. Cared for children, cared for families and brought that, those values to his work every day. And I hope Clive, you enjoy your retirement. Thank you for your years of service to us. Um, so locally on our COVID, sort of our COVID update, the mayor announced an enormous rental relief program on May 28th, totaling $90 million to support vulnerable San Francisco tenants affected by COVID. This is in addition to the state's rental assistance program that I mentioned in my report earlier. The mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development is administering it, but we are partnering with them very closely. It will be administered by community-based organizations, and we are using our communication channels, social media, to get the word out to our households to take advantage of of this program to pay their back rent that they sort of accumulated because of their loss of earnings during COVID. The city will also receive 887 new emergency housing vouchers from HUD to help house over 1,000 people through what used to be called the Section 8 program. It's now called the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So lots of, lots of investments coming into the city to help our households, as you can tell. At the Board of Supervisors, there's been a lot of interest in in food, in food support. Supervisor Ronan held a hearing last week on food insecurity under COVID, and what the city's response was, Susie Smith from our staff presented for HSA. As you know, HSA is leading the city's response for food under COVID. Supervisor Safai introduced legislation to establish what he's calling food empowerment markets, which is really a model to allow households, individuals who need food support to really to shop rather than sort of stand in line and receive a bag of groceries, allow them to choose what they want in terms of groceries. Really showing a little bit of independence and a little bit of more dignity. And he, Supervisor Safai, is calling for HSA to lead this effort. And then he's also working on legislation requiring the Department of Public Health to publish a biannual food security report. So I think all this is teed up, is teeing up a discussion in our budget hearings next month, where the board is going to invest significantly in additional food supports for our families. Um, and within HSA or admin and finance world, the mayor's budget will be submitted to the Board of Supervisors on June 1st. That's next week. She'll have a budget presentation in in person, public presentation on June 1st. Our budget is finalized with her office now and in June, June report, I'll walk through sort of where we're at post-budget hearings. The budget hearings will begin the third week of June at the board and hopefully finalized at the end of June. We are getting in sort of the final phases of operations under our pandemic, and we're continuing to focus internally on the safe operation, safe operations of our buildings and programs, continuing all the health and safety measures that we were incorporating under COVID. The city is is sort of on a reopening path. The Board of Supervisors will start meeting in public on June 7th, I believe. Board committees will continue to be remote and specifically for you all, city commissions will also continue to be remote, likely through the end of the summer. So let's move on to the issue that's sort of most talked about in the reopening task force that I'm on, and that's telecommuting. Staff telecommuting. As we move into the post-pandemic world, the city in general in HSA is really committed to making use of what we've learned during our pandemic about program operations and specifically around telecommuting and using it more extensively, where this practice fits, where we continue to, can continue to serve clients. We're working under an interim telecommute policy now. As you know, the mayor directed all of us to maximize telecommuting under COVID. But we're really looking at sort of as we move into the new normal, what that's going to look like. So all of our programs are examining the way they're working remotely, analyzing which of the functions can be, need to be done in the office and which can be done remotely, and the number of staff that are on site each day to be able to do that. This is a really, this is really complex work. All of our programs are different. They all have different requirements on clients, different paperwork processes. We're assessing what processes we can automate to maximize telecommuting. So we're working through that. We anticipate over the next two months or so to have our telecommuting plans. But my, you know, ideal, ideally for me and my vision around HSA is that we have a mix of sort of in-office, everyone will have sort of some work in office and some telecommuting, allowing us to take advantage of, of, you know, working from home and being more environmentally friendly, being more family-friendly, being more flexible, really, I think, improving morale while still delivering vital services to the public. The agency's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Office continues to implement our racial equity action plan. This is a significant undertaking. And and I'm really pleased with the progress so far that we've made. We'll soon be releasing an Employee Resource Group policy. This is going to allow staff to form employee resource groups, sometimes known as employee affinity groups, such as the HSA Black Employees Association or the Filipino-American HSA Associate, HSA Association. And we'll be issuing guidelines and also talking about how the agency can support the foster development and operation of those groups. In June, the office, the DEIB office, in partnership with the Racial Equity Work Group, will host our first quarterly racial equity lunch and learn. It's going to be by division. It's for staff to engage. It's sort of informal lunchtime discussions about racial equity. The first lunch and learn will be hosted with DOS and then followed by Family and Children Services and ESSS, Employee Economics, Support Self-Sufficiency. We continue to partnership in the government alliance on GARE, attending a three-day virtual GARE membership meeting where we connected with other cities who are doing the same work that we're doing across the country. And then we continue to work with, this is one of, to me, a really important area, continue to work with the city's Department of Human Resources to increase the diversity of job applicant pools through increased communication with job seekers, upstream communication with potential job seekers in the world of human services, increased advertising of open job opportunities, and then regular department spotlights hosted by DHR with potential job applicants, sort of what is the world of HSA like? How does it feel to work at HSA? And then partnering with other professional associations to increase diversity of applicants. And then our last two divisions, ESSS and Family and Children's, Employment in Economics, Support Self-Sufficiency, as you know, Noel departed and Dan Kaplan is serving as acting workforce, leading that division as he continues to be the deputy under admin, over admin. During the pandemic, our programs in ESSS have been operating under a broad range of waivers. And the idea around the state waivers and some federal waivers were to make it easier for clients to apply for assistance and to continue to receive benefits. And at the same time, reducing the need for for clients to come in person to our offices. The things like CalWorks eligibility waivers relating to document verification and intake interviews, CalFresh waivers, Medi-Cal waivers of work requirements. I bring this all to your attention and to staff who are attending that these waivers all have different end dates. They've all been extended at different times, and we're looking, we're doing a matrix on which are going to be reincorporated soon. Because work, the workload will will begin to sort of resume at the same level that was prior to the pandemic. And so we have to be mindful of this, both in communications with clients to ensure that they don't drop off aid, but also as we think about remote work, telework versus in-office. And then lastly, in Family and Children Services, this month, it's on your agenda is Foster Care Awareness and Resource Family Appreciation Month, and our Employee of the Month, Ms. Danielle Turner plays an integral role in this, in the success of our foster care program, and you'll hear more about that in a little bit. We did get our final adoption numbers for 2020. We did finalize 65 adoptions, which is, which we are really proud of, given the difficulties and the challenges under the pandemic. We're really now, we're continuing to, but even an increased focus now on the long-term stayers in foster care to see what we can do to get them into permanency beyond just simply being a welfare system. The 2021 Independent Living Skills Graduation Ceremony ceremony will be held on June 8th virtually. And I'm really pleased that in spite of the challenges that that our students have faced under COVID, we have many of our foster youth on track to graduate from high school and begin their freshman year in college, and also several non-minor dependents graduating from college. And it's really a nice way to celebrate them. Usually it's an in-person celebration, and this year, of course, it'll be remote or virtual. In terms of vaccines for our children who are in foster care, the Family and Children's Nursing Staffs working closely, DPH, which working closely with our Protective Service workers to schedule appointments for youth between the ages of 12 and 17, as well as non-minor dependents to get vaccinated. They were prioritized in the city's plan. Our Resource Family Caregivers, given that it is Resource Family Appreciation Month, will be issued annual identification cards that will show that they are approved Resource Family Caregivers in San Francisco with SFHSA. These cards will be used for them to provide verification at medical appointments, school enrollments, other activities where foster youth are prioritized. Will allow them, I think, to show their, you know, their ID cards with pride, and they should. And then lastly, I just want to mention four Protective Service workers who were honored at the 2021 Foster Care Youth Services End Year Celebration. They were giving this, given the Supportive Adult Award for their advocacy and support of their clients that are currently enrolled at SFUSD. And the honorees are, I hope I pronounced their names correctly, Shabrika Bowers from Family Services Unit, Lijia Morel from Family Services Unit, Kelsey Parsons, also from FSU, and Jean Veit from our Supportive Transition Unit. So congratulations to you for Protective Service workers for being recognized for your great work for children and youth in the city. I will take a breath, conclude my report, and turn it over back to you, Commissioner, President Kahn, and Commissioners for questions or comments.
Well, thank you, Trent. Lengthy report, but certainly adds up and makes sense a lot of the things that you've told us, that's for sure. Are there any questions from members of the Commission of Trent? Are there any questions from members of the Commission of Trent?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chair, but I just would like to again welcome Ms. Ehrman. One of my longtime friends and. Co-laborators in the community. So it's glad. DAS, thank you.
Great. Well, me too. She used to be on our commission and sit next to me and she was very helpful when I first joined the commission. So. I appreciate that as well. Moving on to item five, the Employee of the Month, who, as you heard earlier from Trent, is Danielle Turner.
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Okay, go right ahead, Rita.
Trent. Have you heard of implicit bias training?
Implicit bias training? Yes, absolutely.
Would be helpful. It doesn't sound as if you need it for your staff, but I just wondered. If you ever considered it or if you think that it might be needed.
So we. Indeed, and we actually have. The executive leadership, I believe, have gone through implicit bias training. I have, it's rolled out through our staff. I don't, I don't know if our HR Director Katrina Williams is on or not, but we have a whole training schedule. To roll out our implicit bias training through our various divisions and I'd be happy, Commissioner, to provide that to you. Through an email, just if you're interested. It is a critical component of our racial equity action plan and. And the one of the critical components of our training around racial equity is recognizing implicit bias. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rita. Moving on to item five now, our Employee of the Month, Danielle Turner. And Danielle's online with us and I believe there are several members of her family. I think her husband Bill Turner's online. I think her parents, Bruce and Lisa Jolly. And her sister Gabrielle Jolly and I believe her aunt, Gail Birdsong. So to all of you that are relatives of Danielle's, thank you. Okay, here we go. The Commission is pleased to announce that Danielle Turner is the May Employee of the Month. Danielle is an acting supervisor from the Resource Family Approval Team within Family and Children's Services. Danielle has been with the RFA team since 2017. She supervises with a positive collaborative attitude and is depend, is a dependable employee. Who demonstrates compassion and a strong work ethic. She has developed the breadth of experience after working many areas of the program. This band of knowledge has benefited the RFA program as her input is an integral, integral to program development. And strong partnerships. Danielle is a team player, always willing to lend a helping hand. She stepped up twice to be acting supervisor to support the program when supervisors were out on leave. She's a fast learner, detail oriented and efficient, using her excellent problem solving skills. To find creative solutions to support her team in approving families. All while lending an empathetic ear to staff and clients alike. Danielle returned from maternity leave during the height of the shelter in place order last year. And congratulations to the grandparents. She was ready to roll up her sleeves and assist with the recruitment. And Community Resources Families by making calls, following up and helping applicants with the approval process. Danielle is also part of a team of Resource Family Social Workers who are custodians of records. She volunteered to come to the office to print live scan results during the pandemic. This is an essential service to ensure dependent youth are placed with safe and nurturing families. Her commitment and dedication are admired and respected by her colleagues and community providers. For these reasons, we are honored to present Danielle as the May 21. Employee of the Month. Trent, would you like to add to these comments?
I would, I would, President Khan. Congratulations. First we applaud. Congratulations, Danielle. You know, the work we do with our foster parents, our resource families is is among the most important we do in in Family and Children's Services. We want kids. When you think about, you know, we're removing children from their birth parents, which is trauma that they have. On top of the trauma that they experienced prior to removal, whether it's neglect or abuse. And then we're placing them with, if they're not placed with relatives, replacing them with with strangers and we. Want them to be the most nurturing, supportive parents possible and we need more of them and. You know, the state keeps changing what we require of them and I think in a good intention, but it but it's complicated. They have to go through a lot of training and certification and and. They need stick-to-it-iveness and the more supportive our staff can be to them in that process. Both recruiting and getting new, but also supporting them through and post is just so important. And so Danielle, very glad that we were able to recognize you. We have, we have big challenges ahead. You know, I've set a goal that we don't want to have to place any child outside of San Francisco. Unless it's with a relative. So if they have to be placed with a non-relative, I want that, we all want that child to be placed in San Francisco. So we need to recruit a lot more resource families and I'm confident that we will. With the great work that you Danielle do and your colleagues as well as our leadership. So thank you. And congratulations on the on a COVID, COVID baby. And thanks for coming in as a new mom and showing your dedication to your work.
Thank you. Hi, good morning, everybody. I just want to say thank you to the RFA team, Resource Family Approval. And Family and Children's Services for the nomination and for all the support that they have given me throughout my time with HSA. And also thank you to my family too for all their support. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would like to say something.
Okay.
I am the, the, actually the union rep for Danielle over at HSA. I represent the social workers and. Several other employees, but Danielle is also my niece. So I'm, you know, I am very proud of her. I am not surprised that she is receiving this, this award. I've known her from birth. She's always been soft spoken, unlike me, total opposite of me, if you all know that. Okay, so but. Of the things I have heard since I have have been the union rep for HSA. I don't have a lot of dealings with Danielle during the course of her work. Or, you know, she doesn't contact me for union stuff or anything like that. She just goes to work and does her job. I see her off, you know, off the clock. So I am just so very proud of her and and she knows that. But first and foremost, I want to say that she is a very hardworking, dedicated young lady. Very compassionate about this work and that's why she went to school specifically for this. And she is very compassionate about it, not only because, you know, that's, that's in her heart to take care of children. But this is also the community that she lives in, that she serves and grew up in. So I just, and I just can't say it enough. I know I sound like a broken record, but I'm very proud. Thank you, Danielle, for your service and keep up the good work.
And I have to say, Gail, we had no idea she was your niece, but she was nominated. Thanks for those words.
Thank you, Danielle.
As her mother real quick.
Sure.
I just want to say real quick that we're very proud of her. Her family is, being a San Francisco girl, born and raised. We always knew that she'd give back to the city that we love and we just like to say, we've heard nothing but great things about. Her coworkers and the people that she works with. And I, we just want to say we're very proud of her. Thank you, everybody.
And thank you, Mom and Dad.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? If not, then we'll move on to item six.
I think Sophia Isom had a comment. Tell her to take herself off mute.
Hi, Commissioner Khan, this is Sophia Isom and I'm the Program Director over to Resource Family Approval Program. And I just also want to acknowledge all the hard work that everyone does. But, you know, the acknowledgement that Danielle is receiving is well deserved. She's been an outstanding employee. She has a great reputation with the caregivers and we are very, very lucky to have her. So once again, Danielle, congratulations.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if there are not any, then let's move on to item six, our consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners want to remove an item for individual discussion? If not, then can I ask for a motion to?
So moved.
All in favor? So moved. Moving on to item seven, Commission Action Items. Item A, requesting approval from the Commission for the Family and Children's Services System Improvement Plan. Calling on Liz Crudo.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to, I think I can share my screen here. So you can see that. Oh no, that's the wrong one. Let me try one more time, otherwise I'll just skip that part. Nope. All right. I'm going to skip this slide. I only had two anyway. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to request approval of the 2019 through 2024 System Improvement Plan. This SIP was actually presented to you in late 2019. However, we've had extensive back and forth with CBSS over the last year and a half to finalize the report. And so I'm here today and that's why you're hearing a report from 2019 and 2021. Because of this extensive length of time to finalize the report with the state and the subsequent changes to it. So we wanted you to have a chance to relook at it to to give your approval. We are mandated through AB 636, as is every other California county, to undergo a self-assessment qualitative case review process. And system improvement planners strategic plan every five years. And this involves a collaborative, community-based process that gathers input from families, youth, caregivers. Public and private partners, peer child welfare and juvenile probation agencies in other counties and our own staff. In doing this, we develop a comprehensive self-assessment report to identify prioritized outcomes and action steps. That are subsequently outlined in our SIP. And for San Francisco, for this next round, we are looking at timely permanency for children within 12 months of entering foster care. And reduction in reentry of children who achieve permanency within 12 months. To keep them from coming back into foster care. So we have three identified strategies. The first is the implementation of Seneca's Mobile Response Line for Families. Which is available both to families in which children are residing with their parents or in-home cases. And also for resource families or foster or relative caregivers. Caregivers can call and request assistance for crises that they identify. To deescalate situations and stabilize placement so that we can keep children home. And keep them from bouncing around in foster care placements. The second strategy involves expansion of our recruitment campaign and you just heard in Danielle's award this morning. How important our supports for our caregivers are and how important it is to keep children local. Through our recruitment campaign, we're looking for more foster homes in San Francisco so that children can stay in their communities and maintain connections. And also training and mentoring supports to caregivers through our contract with AFF. Finally, we are implementing a safety organized practice case consultation model for staff to better engage and support families. This involves a group decision-making and consultation practice for staff and managers. That uses a mapping framework and facilitated process to review case information. And identify best thinking about next steps for the case caring worker to better engage and support the family. So what really the big changes since the initial plan where that CBSS wanted a more narrow focus. So we've really reduced the strategies that were referenced in the initial report. Even though we are continuing to do the full range of action steps that we had first identified, including things like. Looking at our core practice model implementation. With the focus on workforce development support, analyzing some of our outcome improvements effort efforts. Through our child and family team meeting implementation and concurrent planning and assessment mapping of city resources that we take the controllers off. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
James McCray, thank you very much. Appreciate you. Thank you. I'm just musing. What do you expect to be the caseload over the next five years? As we work with both in probation and and the youth in our systems. Do you think it's going to be growing or declining?
I think it's going to be, well, it has declined significantly over time and that's been the general trend in child welfare. But in San Francisco, it's declined even kind of exceeded that trend. You heard Trent talking about the Family First Prevention Services Act. And that's something that will be starting this October if California opts in. Looking at really expanding the prevention services. That could be available in San Francisco to keep families out of the child welfare system. So we have a citywide prevention task force that our department co-chairs. You know, the the next presentation I'll be doing is talking about differential response, which is, you know, a service that we provide to support. At-risk families to keep them out of the system. We'll be able to really capitalize on a lot of the prevention efforts we're doing. Hopefully through FFPSA and subsequently see some additional reduction in our, in our numbers.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there any public comment? And then I'm asking for a motion to approve the Family and Children's Services System Improvement Plan. Second, all in favor? So moved. Item B, requesting authorization to enter into a new grant agreement with. Instituto Familiar de la Raza for Differential Response Services. For a period July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2026. In the amount of $1,448,015 plus a 10% contingency fee. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, I believe Irma Alvarado is on the call. She's the interim differential response program manager at Instituto. So I just want to acknowledge that she's here representing that agency. And again, we're asking for authorization for a new grant with Instituto Familia de la Raza to provide differential response coordination. And Commissioner Khan already gave the dollar note, so I won't repeat those, but this will be for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026. FCS has been providing differential response services since 2005. And Instituto has provided coordination for these services since 2009. Our department refers at-risk families to the differential response program to provide support and help coordinate supports. That prevent child maltreatment for the. Service delivery to prevent child maltreatment and keep families out of the child welfare system. Through this grant, Institute provides coordination, referral triage, training, quality assurance, case consultation and planning. To the various differential response liaisons across the network of family resource centers and other similar programs such as Safe Care. During the 1920 fiscal year, 172 families engaged in services from this program. And these are voluntary services. That was about 60% of the referrals that they received. So we're very pleased with that rate of engagement. IFR was selected through a competitive bid process and the contract is reported with county and state dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Second.
Hold on one second. I might add that the figure I gave, I neglected to mention. There's a 10% contingency for a total amount, which is what you're voting on, of $1,462,495. So that's the total. Now. So that's the total. Now I'm asking for a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor? So moved. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Aye.
I missed something. Item C, requesting authorization to enter into a new grant agreement with Compass Family Services for homeless early care and education case management for a period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $2,121,000 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $2,333,100. Calling on Jason Holt.
Good morning, all. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jason Holt, a senior analyst with the Office of Early Care and Education. We're asking the Commission's approval for a three-year, a new three-year contract with Compass Family Services to provide early care and education case management to homeless families with young children in San Francisco. Compass has been a longtime contractor with HSA for a decade now. They've been providing childcare case management services to homeless families. Navigating the childcare subsidy and enrollment systems can be an overwhelming and complicated process, true for any family, but particularly challenging for homeless families given their circumstances. San Francisco has prioritized early care and education services for all homeless families living in the city with children under five through subsidized enrollments. In the case management services in this grant agreement, homeless families are provided vital resources, access, and supports to locating, enrolling, and maintaining high-quality early care and education services. This contract was rebid in March of this year, and Compass Family Services was selected as part of that competitive process. I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission will have, and we also have representatives here from Compass as well, Heather and Easter.
I have a question. About how many families eat this year? Approximately?
Approximately 350 families a year that they are directly case managing the early education care services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Commissioners? Was there any public comment? If not, can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Item D, requesting authorization to renew the grant agreement with Dress for Success San Francisco for the provision of interviewing shooting services for a period July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $97,300 plus a 10% contingency for a total not to exceed $107,030. Calling on Adriana Duran.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, President Khan and Commissioners. My name is Adriana Duran, and I am the Community Services Monitor for the Welfare to Work Service. As President Khan said, we're asking for renewal with the Department of from the Department of Benefits and Family Support Services to request the renewal of grants with the Dress for Success San Francisco for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $97,300 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $107,030. The purpose of this grant is to provide women in the CalWorks, PACE, and CowFresh ABAP programs with job interviewing clothing. Dress for Success empowers women to achieve economic independence by providing a network of support, professional attire, and development tools to help women thrive in work and in life. They have been providing this service for over 20 years and have been collaborating with the Human Services Agency since 2008. Welfare to Work staff refer women to Dress for Success for a one-on-one appointment with trained volunteer personal shoppers who help them select appropriate clothing, shoes, and accessories for their scheduled job interview. Volunteers guide the women through the selection processes, making recommendations and educating them on conventional workplace expectations. These services help our participants feel confident and ready for the interview. The program would serve 350 women per year. I'm available to answer any questions, and we also have Arma Vio, the Executive Director of Dress for Success. Thank you.
As a woman, it seems to me it's up to me to say how important this program is. Women are going to go out in the workplace. They need to dress for success, so therefore it's my honor.
Is there a motion for approval?
I just moved it.
Second? I'm sorry you didn't come clear. Is there a second?
Second?
Thank you, Reverend McCray.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved. Moving on to item E, calling on Marlene Sanchez, requesting authorization to renew the grant agreement with the Arriba Juntos for the provision of VIP VESL programs for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $3,650,659.76 plus a 10% contingency for a total not to exceed $4,016,417,400. Is there, Marlene, any comments? Or Marlin?
Yes. Buenos dias, Commissioners. How are you? Buenos dias. My name is Marlene Sanchez, Community Services Specialist for Welfare to Work. And the purpose of this grant is to provide vocational immersion, English as a second language program, along with work participation activities that provide subsidized employment to meet the federal work participation rate. The VIP services will be provided to Arriba Juntos, who subcontracts with City College of San Francisco for the vocational ESL language instruction and the ESL level assessments for each participant. Using a variety of learning tools, participants are provided work-related language skills that can be used immediately at their work sites. The Vocational Immersion Program also includes subsidized employment component concurrent with the vocational English instruction. The VIP participants are placed in paid work experience at community nonprofit organizations for six months at a time. The job site supervisors assist participants at the work sites, helping them work more effectively and become familiar with the American workplace culture. Participants will also receive job readiness training and assistance with job search placement. If this contract is granted, the program will serve 120 participants per year. I am available to answer your questions, and Gladys Garcia from Arriba Juntos is also available.
Are there any questions from members of the Commission? Is there any public comment? And I asked for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Sir, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And calling on Marlin Sanchez once again for item G, the Exemplar Human Services for Provision of Report and Analytic Services to Support the CalWorks Program for a period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $906,000 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $996,600. We already did S.
Okay. Well, I'll present Exemplar for sure. The Department of Human Benefits and Family Support requests authorization to enter into contract with Exemplar Human Services. The purpose of the contract is to provide consulting services, including report production, monthly forms, and analytical services to support the CalWorks eligibility and welfare to work programs based upon data extracted from counseling. The, this case load reports will provide staff with the tools needed to track eligibility and participation in order for the county to meet the required work participation rate and avoid federal penalties. Since 2015, Exemplar has worked with San Francisco and other counties to generate data alerts and produce easy, automated, and effective reports that are crucial for meeting, managing case loads and monitoring participation. If this contract is granted, Exemplar will provide this service to assist CalWorks eligibility and welfare to work programs in its effort to improve client engagement, work participation, and service effectiveness. I'm available to answer your questions, and Aaron Goldberg from Exemplar is also available.
Are there any questions? Any comments from the public? If not, then I ask for a motion to approve. Sir, second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to?
Sorry, Commissioner, can I say one thing? Marlin, did you do F?
We skipped one of them.
Okay, let's go back and do, I believe it's F with Arriba Juntos.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I guess I didn't, I turned the page too fast. So going back to item F, the total amount is $5,161,338. Is there any public comment? Requesting authorization to renew the grant with the Arriba Juntos for the amount I just stated for, from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023.
Yes, Commissioners, the purpose of this grant is to provide the following three programs. The Transitional Employment and Welfare to Work Reengagement Program offers subsidized employment in case management activities to unengaged CalWorks participants. It provides one-month jobs, which reengages participants in welfare-to-work activities and helps the CalWorks program meet the federal work participation rate requirement. Transitional Employment will serve 325, 525 participants per year. The PSD Skills Development for Work Study Program provides post-secondary academic instruction such as adult basic education to CalWorks public service trainees through City College instructors. The program assists CalWorks in keeping participants engaged and also meet WPR. In a full year, the PSD Work Study Program will serve 35 participants. The Bridge and Filler Program piece provides part-time or temporary subsidized employment to CalWorks City College students who are in the Work Study Program. This CalWorks students take classes along with 15 to 20 hours of weekly paid work study through City College. The extra filler hours of paid work experience helps families meet the work participation requirements. And to also support the students, the program provides a bridge activity to address the gap that occurs between semesters and helps to keep the time engaged. In a full year, the Bridge and Filler components will serve 150 participants. So I am available to answer your questions, and Gladys Garcia from Arriba Juntos is also available.
Are there any questions from members of the Commission? If not, then is there any question from public comment? If not, then I'm asking for a vote on the approval of $5,161,338. Is there a motion for approval? This is item F. I think I heard Darson saying, is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Now moving on to item H. Once again, Arriba Juntos, Hero, Eracy. This is for the provision of employment services to formerly and currently at-risk homeless individuals for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, in the amount of $270,180 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $297,198. Hero, RAC, do you have any comments? For your presentation? Apparently there are no comments. Yes?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Did we cover item G? Exemplar?
Yeah, we voted on that, and then I went back to item F because I had misread it. Yes. So we're on item H now. Is there a motion for approval?
Well, maybe we should wait and see if we can get him to present at the end.
Well, he's not on, so.
I can try to find him.
We can try to reach him, but.
Hi, hi, this is Christina Iwasaki. I'm the Community Services Manager. Jito is, is on, I think he may just be on mute, but he was having technical difficulties. So I can cover for him. I'm the Community Services Manager, and with your permission, we would like to cover the next four items, H, I, J, and K.
Okay, that's fine. We do have to vote on each one individually.
Yes.
Okay.
So these, these are the contracts for employment services for formerly homeless and currently at-risk individuals. The, the four providers offer vocational training programs. And the training programs with Arriba Juntos are a certified nursing assistant, home care aide, and automated office skills. ECS provides the chef's culinary arts as well as a social services program. Goodwill provides a customer service program, and CHP provides a desk worker program for their housing sites. So the vocational programs are provided, and they also provide job search as well as job placement services and job retention. So the total number served will be not 400 but 267 participants this year. Representatives from each of the organizations are here as well, from ECS, CHP, Arriba Juntos, and Goodwill. And we can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item H.
I have a question.
Go right, go right ahead.
Do the four, how often do the four agencies meet together? Or do they meet together?
We do have quarterly meetings where we get together with all four agencies.
Each one knows what the other is doing.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Move approval.
First, let me ask you, is there any public comment? If not, then I asked for a motion for approval, and Commissioner Semmel just made the first motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Item I, requesting authorization to renew the grant agreement with Community Housing Partnership for the Provision of Employment Services to Formerly and Currently at-Risk Homeless Individuals for a Period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, in the amount of $350,200 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $385,220. Comments again, please? Comments again, please?
This, this is, this is Tony, this is Tony with the Program Director. I think Christina already presented all these programs, and I think the next piece is to approve each one individually. And I think that's, that's what this is about.
Okay, then let me ask for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Okay.
Item J, requesting, requesting authorization to renew the grant agreement with Episcopal Community Services of San Francisco, Inc. for the provision of employment services to formerly and currently at-risk homeless individuals for a period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, in the amount of $256,287 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $281,916. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. Item K, requesting authorization to renew the grant with Goodwill Industries of San Francisco, San Mateo, and Marin County for the provision of employment services to formerly and currently at-risk homeless individuals for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, in the amount of $148,904 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $163,794. Can I ask for a vote from the Commissioners, a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. Item L, requesting authorization to modify the existing grant agreement with Richmond Area Multi-Services for the provision of CalWorks Behavioral Health Pre-Vocational Services for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022, for an additional amount of $722,833 plus a 10% contingency for a revised total amount not to exceed $5,341,841. Can I ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I think the program, I think they did not present it.
Jito is on the call.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now we're...
Good morning, President Khan. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
My apologies to the technology difficulties earlier, and Christina, thank you very much for presenting for me. My name is Jito Arase, and I'm a Community Services Program Monitor for Welfare to Work Services. And I am presenting on the Rams contract now. This modification expands the services to include CalWorks pays and CalFresh participants. The purpose of the, the purpose of the grant is to provide pre-vocational services, pre-vocational behavioral health evaluations, and behavioral health services to eligible participants. Services such as assessment and counseling, psychoeducational groups, and soft skills training assist participants in obtaining meaningful employment and for continued success on the job. Rams will assist participants in engaging in employment services to the full extent of their abilities in order to enable them to obtain unsubsidized employment and move towards self-sufficiency. In pre-vocational services, Rams will provide behavioral health-related soft skills training and peer support to 500 participants annually. In behavioral health evaluations, Rams will provide learning needs assessments to 45 participants annually and recommend suitable activities to those who face learning challenges. Rams will also conduct on-the-job assessments for 20 participants, which includes psychosocial evaluations in a work setting. In behavioral health services, Rams will provide behavioral health assessment and counseling to 250 eligible CalWorks and families rising participants. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Christina Shea, Rebecca Tang, and Vivian Wong of Rams are also here. Thank you.
Are there any members of the Commission that have questions? Then I ask for a motion to approve item L for a total of $5 million...
I have a question that is...
Okay. Go right ahead, George.
Ms. President?
Yes?
No, thanks. This question is, is not related to the subject matter. I'm just wondering, I see the 808 area code. Are you in Hawaii?
Commissioner Yamazaki, I am in San Francisco, but I used to live there, and I just kept the area code, the same phone number from there.
Okay.
You're not working, you're not working out of state.
No, I am in this city, yes.
Just a general question that seems to have been brought up recently, and I meant that more as a joke. So please don't be affected by it. Okay, so asking for a motion to approve item L for $5,341,841.
I'll move.
Is there a second? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Item M, Joseph Huang, requesting authorization to renew the existing contract agreement with Fiscal Expert, Inc. for provisions of a web-based time-study services for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $300,000 plus a 10% contingency for the total amount not to exceed $330,000. Joseph?
Yes, hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to present this contract to you this morning for Fiscal Experts. They provide a very vital service for us. They, they provide a, a web-based time-study system that allows our workers in HSA as well as workers in JPD to time-study their work, which is actually an essential function because the time studies is what is used by the state to allocate costs between programs. I think I presented this contract back in 2011, so this is, it's been a while. But that's when we first started using Time Study Buddy. We, before 2011, we used it, my staff used to, you know, compile time-study data by hand on Excel spreadsheets. It was just a huge task, and you know, when, when things change, it would just be, be a huge task for my staff to manage to, you know, properly and accurately compile all the data so that we could properly and accurately claim to the state and allocate our costs appropriately, appropriately to all the programs. So with this contract, Fiscal Experts do all the work behind the scenes. They maintain the software, you know. Our staff are able to get on anywhere on the web to get onto this program to then enter their time so that we can then get our revenues from the state for the various programs. I, this contract is especially important this year because the state is changing the way they code a lot of the programs because they are changing their automation, their claiming software. And so Time Study Buddy will, will manage all the changes and make sure that our codes are appropriate for the states and will match the state system. That's pretty much it. So yeah, so this is a very vital behind-the-scenes software that we use for a lot of our staff, and it's vital to be able to claim properly our revenues in the state. I'm open for a question.
Thank you, Joseph. Are there any questions of Joseph? Is there any public comment? If not, then I ask for a motion to approve.
So I'll move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. There's a tiny delay here, but that's okay. So item N, requesting authorization to modify the existing contract agreement with Allied Universal Security, calling on Vladimir Rudikov.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, President Khan.
Good morning.
I'm Vladimir Rudikov, Director of Program Integrity and Investigations, and the Human Services Agency requests authorization to modify and extend the existing contract with Allied Universal Security Services for the period from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023, in the additional amount of $8,562,286 plus contingency for a revised total amount not to exceed $23,393,91. And the purpose of this modification and extension is to continue to provide unarmed security guard services to all HSA sites. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions of Vladimir? Reverend McCray? If there are no questions, is there any public comment? Okay, I'm asking for a motion to approve $23,393, excuse me, $23,393,91. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I asked the Commission to, asking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? A second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
Aye.
Ms. President, I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. I'll second that. I have a question. Ms. President?
Yes? Go ahead with your question.
Commissioner Yamazaki, your connection is not working. So maybe you want to try logging in again? We can't hear you.
Are you calling on me? Yeah, I, I had a question about the characterization. Oh, my goodness. Well, can you hear me, Liz?
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you, George.
All right. My, my question wasn't that important.
That is not important.
Okay. Can I have a motion for?
You can't hear me?
Okay, item O.
Well, my, my question was the characterization of the...
I think he's cutting in and out. George, Commissioner Yamazaki, we're having a hard time hearing you. So we're going to have to move on, and maybe we can get your question answered, answered later. Moving on to item O. Jamil Bellamide, requesting authorization to enter a new grant agreement with 211 San Diego for the provision of CalFresh and Medical Cal telephone application assistance for a period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $971,824 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $1,069,006. Jamil?
Good morning, President Khan. Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of the grant is to reduce hunger and improve health in San Francisco. To achieve this goal, we'll work with 211 San Diego to conduct monthly outbound call campaigns to households that are likely eligible for but are not currently receiving CalFresh and/or Medi-Cal benefits, and to households that are due to complete a periodic reporting requirement to continue receiving CalFresh and Medi-Cal benefits. 211 will assist these households in submitting an application or annual form to SF Benefits Net for processing. Additionally, 211 San Diego will deliver any benefits to language material or communication in languages comprising, but not limited to Cantonese, Spanish, and English. I'm available, available to answer any questions about these services, and Elizabeth, the contract manager, can also respond to questions regarding the contracting process.
Thank you, Jamil. Is, are there any, is there any comment from the Commissioners? Or is there any public comment? If not, then I ask for a motion to approve the amount of $1,069,006. Can I have, okay, is there a second? Second? Rita, anyone? Okay. If there are all in favor? All in favor? Aye, so moved. So moved. Item P, Karina Zhang, for Huckleberry Youth Programs for the provision of crisis intervention and case management services for commercially sexually exploited children, young adults for a period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $1,026,400 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $1,129,040.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. My name is Karina Zhang, and I am a program analyst with the Family and Children Services. And I'm here to request your authorization to renew the grant with Huckleberry Youth Programs for the Crisis Intervention and Case Management Services for the commercially sexually exploited children and young adults. And they're more commonly referred to as CSAC. The Huckleberry Advocacy and Response Team, also known as the HART team, was established in February 2016 in response to the law change in the state to channel services for CSAC through child welfare. The HART team runs a 24/7 response line that parallels the FCS Child Abuse Hotline and responds to the CSAC referrals jointly with FCS. They work in partnership with FCS and the greater community to help the youth achieve safety, permanency, and well-being outcomes. HART serves youth ages 11 to 24 years old. They worked with both system-involved and non-system-involved youth. In the past five years, HART has successfully... In the past five years, HART has successfully established themselves as the primary CSEC service provider in San Francisco, and HART team members are being recognized by the state and by the local community as experts in serving this population, and they are often being invited to CSEC trainings and events as a subject matter experts and consultants. So in fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, HART served a total number of seventy clients. And this year, despite all the challenges they faced, they are on track to meet service objectives for the current fiscal year. And a recent survey that was conducted with the FCS front-end staff showed that our staff are, found HART services helpful and valuable. They gave an average rating of four over five on the HART team's ability to collaborate with FCS, demonstrate professionalism, engage youth, and provide logistical supports to youth. I have here with me Huckleberry Youth Programs Program Director Carly Devlin. She'll be happy to answer any questions you have about their services, and I'll also be happy to answer any questions you may have about this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the commission? Any public comment? Then I ask for a motion to approve one million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand forty dollars, item P.
I'll move.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item Q, Seneca Family of Agencies, calling on Vlad Agulchin to provide secure transportation for foster children and youth for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars plus a ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Good morning, President Khan and fellow commissioners. I am Vlad Agulchin, an administrative analyst with Family and Children Services Foster Care Legibility Program. I'm here today to seek your authorization to renew the grant agreement with Seneca Family of Agencies for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for the provision of secure transport services for foster youth with complex and challenging medical, mental health, and behavioral needs to placements inside and outside of San Francisco. Seneca has partnered with Family and Children Services for many years in providing various services to children and youth involved in the child welfare system. Approximately forty percent of San Francisco foster children are placed out of county. FCS has placed youth all over California. Any change of placement can be traumatic, and for children and youth with complex and challenging needs, it can be a very vulnerable time. Some youths pose a danger to themselves and/or others and need a more secure and supportive transportation option that can be provided solely by, that cannot be provided solely by a protective services worker. For these rare occurrences, having specialized and highly-trained personnel is essential to ensure a youth is transported safely to a placement. This type of transport usually involves a youth who is quite resistant in going to their new placement and has usually exhausted all other possibilities for placement. Specialized treatment for some youth can mean being placed unwillingly out of state or at a placement not of their choice, and other less secure options of transportation have been exhausted. As a result of secure transfer contract with Seneca, many youths benefited from professional inexperienced staff and were transported to or out of San Francisco safely and successfully. Seneca has met their annual contract objectives and outcomes throughout the duration of our partnership and continues to put every effort in serving each youth needing services. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this request. Also joining us here today is Amy Kirstan, Regional Executive Director with Seneca Family of Agencies. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Vlad. Are there any questions from the commission? And is there any public comment? If not, then I ask for a motion to approve item Q on our agenda.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Item R, Authorization for Edgewood Center for Children and Their Families. Irene Kadansiv, oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay. Edgewood Center for Children and Their Families for Provision of Kinship Services for a period of July first, twenty sixteen, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for an additional amount of five hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and five dollars plus a ten percent contingency for revised total amount not to exceed three million six hundred thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Good morning, President Khan and fellow commissioners. My name is Irene Kadansiv. I'm a program analyst with Family and Children Services, and I'm here today to seek your authorization to modify an existing contract with Edgewood Center for Children and Families for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for the provision of kinship services to resource families and San Francisco minors and non-minor dependents placed in their care. Edgewood Center for Children and Families has partnered with FCS for fifteen years in providing various services to children and youth involved in a child welfare system. Under this contract, Edgewood provides kinship services to resource families who have assumed the role of caretaker to San Francisco minors and non-minor dependents placed in their care. The kinship program offers parenting, support groups, rescue programs, advocacy, and case management. In addition, they provide educational workshops, assist caregivers with navigating community-based services, and provide youth enrichment activities. As a result of their service, over a hundred families each year receive services that help caretakers face unique challenges to successfully raising children and have certain families' capacities through effective parenting methods that address children's and youth's needs. Edgewood Kinship Program has consistently met their annual contract objectives and continues to implement innovative ways to meet the needs of families they serve. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this request. We also have Cynthia Green, a program director with Edgewood Center. She's also available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the commission? Any public comment? If not, then I ask for a motion to approve the three million six hundred thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars, item R on our agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Irene, don't go away so quick, because you're next. So I'm, I'm just going to say this is Irene, like Madonna, because I'm not going to try to say, I'm not going to try the, to pronounce the last name. This is the NALS Foundation for an Emergency Placement Program for Non-Miner Dependents for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus a ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Commissions, I would like to ask for your authorization to renew contract with NALS Foundation for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for the provision of emergency housing program for non-minor dependents. Family and Children Services had and continues to have youth in need of immediate housing option upon re-entry into extended foster care or during placement changes. To meet this need, our program began a pilot project through NALS Foundation for the provision of two emergency bed placements in San Francisco. This was an eighteen-month-long pilot project that started back in January of twenty twenty. Throughout the duration of the pilot, NALS Foundation has successfully met the need for this housing option by providing emergency placements for homeless youth in need of immediate placement. During this project, NALS Foundation provided emergency beds that are available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days per year, and accepted hundred percent of all referrals made by FCS staff, meeting their contractual objectives and outcomes. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this request, and we also have Tina Dollison, the NALS Foundation Program Director. She's also available to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any questions from members of the commission? Is there any public comment? If not, then I ask for a motion to approve the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, item S.
So move.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, and then item nine. Thank you. Item I is public. Item I is public comment. Is there any public comment? There's no comments from the public at this time. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.